We might rush it. All right. City Council Workshop in Regular Session, Thursday, June 3, 2021, at 5:45 PM. City Hall, 3300 Corinth Parkway. Pursuant to Section 551.127, Texas Government Code, one or more council members or employees may attend this meeting remotely using video conferencing technology. The video conferencing technology can be accessed at www.city@corinth.com/remote-session. The video and audio feed of the video conferencing equipment can be viewed and heard by the public at the address posted above as the location of the meeting. Notice is hereby given of a workshop in regular session of the Corinth City Council. I call the meeting to order. At this time, Mr. Garber will give us the invocation, then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas pledge. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we stand in unity for this city. And Lord, I pray you allow us to live with our hearts on you and those that we are here to serve. And Father, grace all of us, staff and council alike, with your wisdom. In Jesus' name, amen.
Raise the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Workshop agenda: Conduct training on the use of the iPad. Mr. Hart.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we have Shay Rogers that was going to explain to me how you use these gizmos.
We're all going to figure it out together, so. Hey, James, just making sure you can see me back there. Can you see my screen share? Maybe. Mr. Holdsworth, can you see my screen share?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mayor City Council, wanted to take just a few minutes of your time to kind of go over this, the iPads and how to use specifically the PDF software so we can easily navigate these big agenda packets that we have, things like that. So normally, we will deliver the package to you via email. So they'll come in from Lana. Let me bring it up here. So she'll just attach it as a PDF. And so if you just open up from the mail app, you can read it. I mean, it may look a little bit choppy and blurry here, but that's just the Zoom stream. It's not exactly easily navigable. And so what we've recommended y'all use is a free app called PDF Expert. Just grab it from the iTunes Store, download it. You'll notice that when you open it up in the mail app, mine up here already has open in PDF Expert there on the top right, because I've done it once before. But if you can't see it, open in PDF Expert, this little box with the up arrow on it, you can click that and it'll kind of give you options of what you want to do with the file, the PDF file. You swipe over and you'll see PDF Expert there. And y'all can, if you don't have your tablets here, it looks like you all do. I loaded it on all the tablets up there at the dais if you'd like to use it. So if you just hit PDF Expert, it'll open the file there in PDF Expert for you. We recommend this is because it's a little bit easier to kind of navigate your way through. You can use finger gestures to kind of zoom in, so pinch to zoom. So if we want to like move around, I mean, this is only 68 pages, which isn't a huge packet. But if you want to move around and jump back and forth, you'll notice by the items, the numbers are hyperlinks. So let's say we wanted to go to the minutes from May 11. You can just click on that hyperlink three and it... So...
So you just click on the thing?
Yeah, the...
Just click on it.
Underline. That's one way to do it. There are a couple ways, so I'll give you, I'll give you options. If you click on it, it'll take you to that item and you can navigate back and forth. You'll notice on the lower left-hand corner there for about five seconds, there was a button that said, lower left-hand corner, said back to page one. If you just click in the lower left-hand corner, it'll show up again. You see that back to page one. Just click where that button should be and it'll show up. You can click that and it'll take you back to the top or the page that you were on. And that goes back and forth. So if you're like, oh, wait, no, I want to go back to page six, it'll take you there. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So that's one way to navigate around. Another way is up at the top right, I'm kind of showing y'all too. I mean, hopefully, y'all can see. You'll see like a little book icon, that guy right there. If you click him, it'll default, I think, to outlines. So these are the bookmarks that the system already puts in there for you. So that's probably the easiest way to navigate around. And so let's say we want to go back to those meetings, the minutes from May 11. We can click on that section E, item three, right there, and it'll take us right there. You can expand those out and there's sub-pages for them. So if we want to just see the actual minutes, we can do that. And then if we want to go back up to the cover page, just scroll up and there's that top there that'll take you back all the way to the top. You can add your own bookmarks if you'd like. So next to the little outline icon, there's a little bookmark icon. And so let's say you're reading through and I want to keep this page here. You just hit that add button and you can name it whatever you want. It doesn't, doesn't matter. It just defaults to the name of the page. And then it keeps a bookmark there for you and puts a little red mark up there so that you remember. So at any point, you can jump back to your bookmark by going to that bookmark tab and then hitting that bookmark will take you right there. Then this icon over here, if you would like to use it, I know one reason why folks like using the paper ones is they can annotate, they can take notes and stuff like that. This has that feature kind of built in. So up at the very, very top, there's an annotate tab up here. So if you click that, it kind of gives you a toolbox of different annotations. So first, if y'all are interested in, is the highlighter. It's this little box with the A in it, so you can highlight whatever you want. It'll kind of keep that for you. On the little window on the right, there's a little box with an A in it, right there, if you can see it highlighted. This will show your annotations, so actually shows the text that I've highlighted there. And again, you can use those to navigate. And so if I want to go back to that, like, oh, man, I wanted to ask about that, I can click on it and it'll take me exactly back to where I had highlighted it. With those highlights, if you want to delete it, you can just click it one time and clear it, say, oh, whoops, didn't mean to, didn't mean to highlight all that. Or if you want, you can attach a note to it, which is helpful. So ask about blah, 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 blah. It'll keep a note there alongside it that you can click on and see some notes that you took. You can notice there that I accidentally highlighted stuff that I didn't mean to. Here's something I found out the hard way. So while you have a tool selected, one finger gestures will highlight or use the tool. You can either use two fingers to navigate back and forth or unselect the tool and use one finger to swipe up and down, if that makes sense. So I accidentally highlighted all that, so let me clear that and clear that. You can underline, same deal, or strike through. And again, it kind of keeps tabs there on the right-hand side for you. And you can attach notes to that as well. So if you click on it, one of them, I guess, attach a note, this is in red because I struck through, and you know, put in your, your notes there. And then it'll, you'll see here on the right-hand side, there's a little notation or a note of post-it icon to remind you. You can click on that and see your notes there. The only other thing I wanted to point out is, we don't have the pins yet. We're ordering the pins. They're ordered? Okay. So we'll get you each pins. You can use pins and kind of ink these things up. If not, if you don't want to use the pin, you can use your finger. So this little icon here, little pin icon, you can write, you know, handwritten notes. It doesn't do any sort of text recognition, so it just logs that you used the pin on this page, not necessarily that you did or what you wrote. So as you're looking through your annotations there on the right-hand pane, you'll say, oh, look, I have a pin right here. So you may want to attach a note along with it, which is this little kind of voice box with three dots in it where you can... What's it called? Is that...
I said I'm easily impressed.
Oh!
I pulled out the tree thing.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, I think it's pretty neat, so. That is mostly...
What you write, you want to put in a box?
If you, you're talking about handwriting stuff. Handwriting is, it'll just leave it kind of floating in space. You'll, yeah, you'll want to, well, it'll, it'll bookmark that you've used a pin there. So you see here on the right-hand side, on all this red text, it says pin. So it knows that I used a pin there. It just doesn't know what I wrote necessarily.
But if you physically told it to bookmark it, it would, that page?
Sure, yeah, yeah, you can always add a bookmark there as well. Or, I mean, these are essentially bookmarks themselves and so that you used a pin there. So let's say I'm on, you know, page 55 and like, oh, what was that mark that I did? Let me go back to it. You can click on that pin and it'll take you exactly back to where you used that pin.
Okay.
Does that make sense? If you want to erase it, there's a little eraser there and kind of make it go away. Or if you're like, oh, man, I want to erase all of these, you can hit the clear button and it'll just erase all the annotations that you've created. One other thing that I've noticed is that if you, it's ever like this, where you don't have that bar up at the top, if you just tap in the middle, it'll kind of bring that bar back down for you, the navigation bar.
Shay, if you hit clear, will it clear out everything in the whole document?
It clears out the custom annotations that you made. So it still has...
Just get rid of one.
If you want to get rid of one, so let's say we have a post-it here.
When the box comes up, hit the trash can.
So we have a post-it here. We can hit little delete there. If you have a strike through or something like that, you can, I think you have to click on the actual document and it'll bring up this menu right here and you can say clear and it'll delete that one at a time. In my experience, the eraser is mostly just for the, the pin marks or the marker. So that's a marker right next to the pin. You can use the eraser to erase that. And the top right is an undo button here. So if you want to just go back, you're like, oh, man, I accidentally underlined everything. Instead of erasing it, you can just say undo by hitting that button right there and it will just kind of erase it all. So that's pretty much it, I think. Does that, does that clears mud?
Hey Shay.
We got one on board. Yes, sir, Mr. Holdsworth.
So, okay, I've, I've done all my homework here and I've annotated everything. Show me how to save this and put it in a file system on my iPad so I know how to go find it.
So I think when you, I believe when you just go out of it, it just saves your annotations. Now, I don't know necessarily if you...
How do I find it?
If you share it. So when you, so if you save it for later, if you just open up PDF Expert, it just brings up your files here, which you can organize or delete as you see fit. And so right here, you'll see the date, city council, it just says document just because it's running out of space. If we hit list, it's probably a little bit easier to read. And so it just saves it right here. So we have the 2021-06-03 City Council Workshop. So you hit that and it'll save all the annotations for you. Now, if you want to, if you wanted to email those annotations out, I'd have to get back with you. I'm sure there's a way. I'm, I'm no PDF expert, expert. I imagine exporting, but I'll, I'll have to get back with you. Yes, sir.
Top right corner, if you hit that, there's an option to share.
See, the, good for you, sir. I'm glad that you were here to help me along, so I'm not, like I said, I'm no expert. We're all learning together as we go along. Any other questions on that front?
That's awesome. Thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All righty. Thank you very much.
Bob, you got this all down?
No. I'm gonna need a bomb to get some fiber to you.
Is that, is that in the budget?
Well... You have a star, you have a star. But they won't make me an impact anymore. So I'm gonna have to figure this out.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you, Shay. I don't know if he's still here, but again, I think this is just a continuous education when it comes to technology. Okay, item number two: Conduct the discussion to review the budget priority session, including revisions to the vision and, and the mission statement. Mr. Hart.
We, we gave you a little packet here in front and then there's also a copy of the PowerPoint. The PowerPoint and this, they're identical. So any, everything's on both documents and so we'll, let's see, where am I here? There we go. Okay. Okay, so the PowerPoint, first of all, I appreciated last Thursday. That was an incredibly good discussion. And so what, what you have now in front of you are the, are the notes from that discussion. And so they're broken into the six broad categories that we talked about here. So the quality development, regional cooperation, health and safety, resident engagement, proactive government, organizational development. So we just want to start, and I'm not, I don't want to go through and read all of this, but you have these in front of you and I want to make sure that you don't, you don't, if you recall, as you went through there, we talked about a very general look at those and then we talked about it in individual areas. And then sometimes you would go back. And so what I tried to do is take all of that and then begin to break it down so it's in the proper heading, so. But I think I captured everything that were on, and I still have the flip charts, so in case I've missed something. But, so you see the quality development, have a little bit of a summary underneath. That summary was when you talked about how you would define, in this case, quality development. So I pulled that together and then the numbered items or the items that you talked about that you wanted to see some focus for the year or beyond. So I'll kind of pause there and make sure that you feel like I captured all of your notes properly.
I don't see Bob under the summary of quality development mention of the financial aspect. We had identified quality development as number one, exactly what you have here, and then number two, doing what we want it to do, which is relieving the tax burden on our homeowners.
I think you try, I was, I think number five was kind of something like that.
Oh.
That may have been my muddled comments through Zoom.
Okay, that, that does actually ring a bell now.
But I mean, that's, this is, I wouldn't say it's for educational purposes. I would say it was the purposes of, because we talked about wanting quality development.
Right.
And I was hoping that at some point we, some of that's always going to be subjective, but at some point develop some kind of criteria for saying that's quality because it returns this amount of sales tax revenue, returns this amount of additional ad-van螢 taxes because the property value goes up and lowers. A McDonald's may be a quality development in that context, you know, of sales tax revenue, but, and then I think I further expanded on that, but it may suppress property values around it. And so the net effect is not necessarily the quality you're looking for because it doesn't drive the, the development around it to increase either sales tax or ad-van 螢 taxes.
Right.
And so it's one thing to be like, subjectively, like this is not quality development, you know, then you're just in an argument that nobody can win because, you know, I think it's quality, you know. But if you can say, no, look, here's numerically what happens to our taxes, or here's what we can, here's what Catalyst Commercial says will happen to our tax rate if we attract this kind of development around it, then you can like have a discussion where people, they may not agree on those effects, but we're talking the same language.
Steve, Steve, I'm sorry. I'll try to use my microphone from here on.
I've got some notes there and, so I'm not sure I got them 100%, but no, I've got that marked now, so I follow that, that thought process. So then this is, let's see, what happened? So this is the, the list. Again, it's on the screen and you have it right there in front of you. That's, these are the eight elements. So we've got the number fives, I've got the notes, Sam, that you're talking about there. And then we go from there to regional cooperation. Again, you've got a little bit of the definitional issue. And then you have the points that were made. And a lot of that was, it was, was, was just starting to capture some of these thoughts. And then the, then the list of the strong relationships.
The recall why DCTA was created was to help fund the expansion of I-35. I do definitely remember us talking about that. I don't remember why we would want to recall that specific piece.
Well, I had, that was related to this notion of communicating the need for transportation long-term and how ridership, you know, was building a little bit and then we, then I-35 was widened and then ridership dropped.
Dropped.
And so, so the notion was, well, it dropped because the highway was a lot better. But the reason the highway got funded and got widened was because we did DCTA and without DCTA, we wouldn't have gotten the funding for the, for the widening of I-35.
Okay.
And just keeping that notion in front of us.
Well, and this being the last expansion.
That's right. Yeah.
Okay.
The caveat to that is, that's Sam Burke's analysis of the situation. I mean, I, that's what I think happened.
Yeah.
Others may disagree, but I think if you look at the data, which I've been forced to look at, that you'll see that the trend was up and it, it built during construction. Construction was completed, the toll road was completed and, and it tailed off, which would not, you know, you can't prove that necessarily, but that's a strong correlation and it seems to make a lot of sense to me that once you finish a major highway project that traverses the same corridor as the rail, you should not expect rail ridership to go up, you should expect it to go down.
Right. And then I think, I think a little bit of what you supplemented with that, with, that's why we wanted to focus on destination, elements within the Agora and so forth.
Yes, the rail suffers from the problem of not having a place to go and we need to create places to go on the rail if we expect it to succeed.
Right.
So you're saying the rail actually helped fund the expansion of 35? Or you believe that because the rail was there, that's why the expansion came?
I was told that part of the deal originally was the feds, if they were going to kick in the funding, they needed to see that the county was making an attempt at other, at some form of mass transit. And DCTA was formed for the rail project to show an attempt at mass transit and or, and that may be kind of unnecessarily derogatory, to do mass transit, some form of mass transit to alleviate traffic on the highway. Because we did that, you know, the belief is that the feds were more willing to kick in funding, which they did, which led to, and in addition, our county was willing to kick in a lot of money, which pushed that project up in the priority list, right? The list, it, TechStop may have 50 projects on it. The more money a county or city is willing to invest in the project with TechStop, typically, not always, the higher it gets on the list, right? And so you get more federal money, Denton County kicks in money, you get your highway. And the investment in the rail in part was to get more federal funding and commit that funding so we could get our highway expanded, is my understanding. Obviously, I was not there for any of that.
Sam, I have a question. We talk about the destination aspect of this. Are there other stops along the DCTA route that are also planning, like, because most of them now are either more like commuter lots and, or just nothing?
In my opinion, well, so in Louisville, their downtown stop, I think they're planning to do additional development around that. I don't obviously know the timeframe for that. The, there's two stops in Louisville. The Huffine stop actually has decent ridership comparatively, right? And, you know, it's around all those apartments. I don't know what more you could do around that one. You could probably do a little more around that one, but I don't see a lot of potential there. It's kind of on a, a little bit on an island. And then the long-term plan is to connect the end of the rail with Carrollton. And of course, Carrollton has a downtown. And the long-term plan for Dart, and I don't even know if in the context of transportation it's even a long-term plan, is the Silver Line, which will go east towards Frisco and then connect to DFW Airport. So if we connect to Dart at that location, and we're working on that, then there will be destination in Carrollton and then there will be additional destination opportunities in Frisco and of course, DFW would be a destination. And then ideally, this is not on anybody's agenda, this is my personal thought process, if you could push the line further down to TW, then, and there's, there's some ways to do that, that would be a destination. And we're hopeful that if we get a station, NCTC's campus here and NCTC's campus in Denton, which is right next to the rail stop, will, will create another destination, you know, for commuter-like travel, separate and apart from restaurant, retail kind of stuff. And in my opinion, Denton, if Denton, I can't explain why Denton doesn't get more traffic on the rail than they do because I've used the bike trail to go down there and, and you're, you're there, you're in downtown. I mean, and as, as much, as limited as the parking is down there, if more people were informed about it, I think they would use the rail if it ran more frequently to get to, into Denton, especially during events. But that's, you know, we are in Texas. There's not a lot of habitual rail use.
I also think there's an educational process.
I also think there's an educational process that has to take place too. And I know that Cog's working on that.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think I understand that, that process and I think we've incorporated that some, and then certainly as we're communicating a lot of this with the staff, you know, that, that greater explanation gets picked up as well. And so here's, we talked about the, the relationships and, and then you see what we did here is we took these and kind of grouped them together by, by similar kind of organizations, but I think we captured everything that you had.
The Founder's Corinth, Bob.
I'm sorry?
Founder's Corinth, formerly Corinth Classical Academy.
Oh, okay.
They've popped up out of two or three other meetings.
Yeah.
And now they've got a new director coming, so. Yes, sir.
Founder's Classical, isn't it?
Yeah, it's Founder's Classical Academy of Corinth. And the campus we have is actually labeled the Upper Campus, so that's, that would be the formal name.
Okay, I'll get that added. So then we move over to health and safety. And so there we talk about PTS, the Lake Cities Focus. And then we had two or three comments that I tried to consolidate into point three on this. So, two or three of you brought up that, all from a little different perspective, so I tried to consolidate that. All right, then we move from there to resident engagement. And this is where we deal with the definitional issues here.
Bob, can we go back to health and safety for a moment?
Yes.
When we're talking about the potential preparedness for civil disorder. So in, we've talked about the emergency preparedness plan, which is, trying to see where, I think that's the proactive. But would we, would we need the same type of plan under health and safety, an emergency preparedness plan for the civil disorder?
This would be an element of the emergency management, if that's what you're.
This would be a section under the emergency management.
When we do the emergency management plan, this would be an element of that, yeah. I put it, you know, all this becomes a little subjective, I, you know. I put it here only because it related to public safety. And this is specific to the police department. That, that was my, you know, and, and you know, we, we did this on Thursday night, so you know, over the weekend I typed it up. And then I started to consolidate on Monday and then on Tuesday, you know, we started to group them a little bit and, you know, it, it sort of depends on what, which day and what time I was looking at it, so. So this is the resident engagement. So, so this would have been the definitional component that you talked about.
One of the things, Bob, that, that we want to incorporate in residential engagement is some of the programs that we have, like the Cooperative Electric and also the, the sewer and water things that we have there. But I see we got like 1,200 residents now that are signed up for that Cooperative Electric?
Yeah, let me pick that up and I think, and then Tina, I want to come back and kind of figure out what, what you were talking about on your texting, so. We can do that separate from right now, but, but yeah, I'll go back and pick that up. And then these were some of the elements of that. This is when you talked about some of the podcasts and then using the HOA to help. Help do that. And then we went into the proactive government. So this is the definitional component. And as a side note, you know, we, you know, we had the MMD bill that was in the legislature and that actually died. That was one of the casualties when, Mayor, your good friend, Senator Bittencore, held up that plus another, I guess 20 or 30 bills in retaliation for the House, ignoring some of the Senate bills. And so the MMD got, bill got killed in that parliamentary maneuver. And so on the last day.
Come back in the special session?
I'm sorry?
Will that come, will that item come back?
Well, the, the only way you can pass a bill through the special session is if the governor adds it. And so I would think that would be pretty remote for a bill like that, is what I would think. But I, I don't know, it's, it looks like they're going to do a special session in about six weeks from now, so. Down the middle, middle of July, probably end of July. And so these were some of the items that you'd identified there. So Tina, this is for, you know, on your point, see, yeah, that, what we had a while ago, that can go in either place very easily, so. Then we go to organizational development. And then we have the, the definitional piece there, then the, and then the bullet points there. And we did look at the, the hiring restrictions from boards and commissions. And the only thing that the charter prohibits is if you're an employee of the city, you cannot be on an advisory board. But an advisory board member could resign from that and go to work for the city without any space or time or something.
So we don't have to vote on that, you can just remove that for the.
Yeah, it's, about, you know, we looked it up after, after we talked about, but that was the answer to that, because I, I didn't know. But the, but a member of the city council cannot come to work for the city unless they've been out of office for two years. Yeah, so, you know, we were talking about that.
That's good, we talked about the boards, taking that off of the boards, because we have some really quality people on our boards if we had opening.
I wasn't critical of that.
Oh.
I'm saying for the city council.
Were you wanting to come to work for the city?
No. I shouldn't be able to do it for a couple of years. I'm sure it's a lovely place to work.
But, no, I was just trying to answer some of the questions, because you know, when we, when you asked about them, I'd go, I don't know, I have to go back and look it up. So, so, so we've done that. And then just another, just side note, I don't intend to do the, the, we talked about economic development, leadership and so forth. We will be interviewing three candidates next week, starting on Monday.
And Bob, I didn't want to lose sight of number six. I believe that that was an idea that was brought up.
Mm-hmm.
Through our discussion on what happens if a majority of council has ever turned, how do we get the new members up and running? And certainly don't want a lot of, well, we don't want a majority of new folks to be able to, to have a majority until they're up and running.
Right.
And I don't want to lose sight of that, that's why we had that on there, okay.
Yes. Yeah, and that, that's right, and so I think I captured that accurately. And so you would want to look at that, and I'd have to get with Patricia, that would be a charter election. We've not had a charter amendment election in several years. You can only do those every two years, or not more often than two years. And I think they, they can be done in November or in May. Isn't that right? Or today, I think that's accurate. Who knows?
They can be done, well, they used to be able to be done at any time and then I haven't, I, I think I, we've had some in November in other cities, but I know they were changing all that up, but off the top of my head, I think we can still do them in both November and May.
Yeah. So, so Scott, my thought would be, is that we would, we would start a process during the fall with targeting a May election, if you, if that's what you decide you want to do, so next May. And the reason, as opposed to November, is that way it's going to, that, that way you don't have to pay for, for an extra election.
Absolutely, and I'm also not suggesting, nor do I, Tina, I think you were the one that brought that up, that this needs to be something that happens quickly. So it's, it's probably a good idea that it's well thought out and communicated really well as to the intentions before we just change term limits.
There's something about, Patricia, when you go, when a council's go to three-year terms, it alters the way P and Z has done it.
No.
Okay, and you're sure about that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, well, and it doesn't change P and Z terms or?
No.
Okay, well, maybe I.
It just alters the, if you, if you ran with plurality before, you have to have a majority vote to win. And everybody has to have a place assigned to them. It's not necessarily a geographic place, it's just a place. And then you have to get, you know, 50-point something percent of the vote to win majority.
Okay, okay. Did what?
She knew the answer like.
Oh, I know, I know. Well, you know, I run into this stuff off and on over the years and I, then I can't remember enough details.
Well, it might have been in a charter provision that.
It could have been.
But it's not state law.
Okay, yeah, it's, and it's been 10 years since I've run into that, so. My memory's not all that good. Okay, well, let me, let me kind of back up. So this was the last one, it was on this organizational development. And then we talked a little bit about taking a look at a vision and mission statement. So, on the left is what you see, or at least on the, on the PowerPoint, is the current vision statement. And, and this is, this is, you know, has been thrown together fairly quickly, so I wouldn't, wouldn't say, let's do this tonight. But I think proposed, I think, that if you look at what's proposed, I think that's far more reflective of your direction and conversations. So that's why I just wanted you to take a look at that and then, then we'll come back and deal with this in, in the next month or two. I mean, I think it did, and so from a, from a governance standpoint, we talk about ends and we, and we start to cascade that, this, this is really what, what would make a lot of sense on, on how you do your definitions and the direction, so. Oh, yeah, the last line should say future with effective governance practices. So that was a typo that I missed in, in the review, so. And then the, that would take us then to the mission statement. So what you see is, what we have now is on the left side and, and then, and then kind of a draft of what I would propose. And I still think that needs a little bit more work. But I think it also is more reflective of the conversation you had.
For the vision statement, it's good, but it's lengthy. If there's some way we could condense that, because generally your vision and mission statements need to be.
A little bit shorter, yeah, and, and you, you must have been eavesdropping of the, on the conversations here, because that was the, that was the first rebuttal I got.
Yeah, there's lots of semicolons.
Yeah, and it, yeah, that's why I, there's no way I want to pass it off to that. But it does capture a lot of the elements of your discussion. And that's what, that's really what I wanted to kind of bring to you tonight, is, is that's really kind of, the, kind of a shell of what you want to work with.
And the word bathhouse is not in it.
Did I miss that?
So Bob, I'm, I'm sure that we'll have, we're, we're going to workshop proposed vision statements again.
Yes, in the next, in the next few months, yeah.
So maybe one of the things that we can brainstorm, I know companies will have an internal vision statement that is more detailed. And then more of an external slogan-ish, a computer on every desk, you know, something like that. Maybe we can add a, an external and an internal vision.
Yes, yeah. That's where we can pick up bathhouse. Yeah. Okay. And then, and then the mission, and this needs the same kind of conversation. But I did want you to see, I, I do think that when you look at this from a governance standpoint, what you do is you want to take these statements and start to break them down, so you're creating sub-ends to these. And, and it really struck me is when I started outlining some of this and started breaking them down to sub-ends, that's when I realized how bad, in my view, how bad the vision statement was, because a growing community that's conveniently located, well, that's, that's a sub-end. And delivers outstanding services, that's a sub-end. And then engages its residents, you know, it does, it's very hard to go in and start to take those and do some greater definitional components. And that, that's why I think the one on the right tends to do that a little better. So, that, that's the thought there, so. And it needs more time than what I've spent on it, for sure. But I think it did capture a lot of our conversations, so. Okay, I've picked up these notes that, that you've said, so that, that's really what I wanted to, want to get back to you and say, you know, here's, here's what you did, what you did for three hours the other day. And that way it gives you a chance to look at it and edit. But this is what we'll use now to go back with the staff and, and so the budget that's being put together will reflect, reflect the work that you've done here.
Very good. Any other questions for city manager? Okay, thank you, Bob. Okay, citizens comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agendas, item are appreciated by the council, may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing any items brought before them at this time. Mr. Otters, is there anybody online?
No one has raised their hand to speak.
Ms. Wiley? Okay. Thank you. Consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. Should the mayor or a council member desire discussion of any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. I entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Catch your vote. It's unanimous. Okay, at this time, public hearing. Consider and take action on ordinance number 21-06-03-16 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Corinth, Texas repealing and re-adopting Section 130.04, curfew for minors of Chapter 130, offenses against any city regulation of Title 18. General offenses of the City of Corinth ordinances in the entirety to establish an enforceable curfew for minors within the city and prohibit, providing an effective date. Mr. Hart?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to have a police chief.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to have our police chief, Judge Garner, come up here, lay out this item for the purposes of the public hearing, and then also to answer any questions on the proposed ordinance that you would consider following the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, council, and I think you'll recall our conversation on this from a couple of weeks ago, we've had a juvenile curfew ordinance in Corinth since basically 2005, but state statute requires us to look at it every three years, the local governing body, and decide if they want it to stay in effect, if they think it's doing what it should be doing. You're, I think, aware of the basics of it, that it prohibits a young person who's under 17 from being on a public street or in a public place, excuse me, between 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM. There's plenty of exceptions on it, like if you're going to work or coming from work, a religious activity, it's an organized event or a sporting event you're going to. The purpose behind it for us is not to write lots of tickets, but it gives us a reason, if there's a youngster who seems to be out in the middle of the night, by looks it appears that they're underage and that they're not on any particular purpose, to stop them, ask them, hey, what's going on, what are you doing? And if they have no, none of these exemptions, say, hey, you need to get on home. Not a lot of tickets are written on this, it's used as a, hey, what are you doing and why are you out here in the middle of the night? Staff believes that this is a good public safety tool for our police officers, and our recommendation would be that you continue the ordinance in effect, and if you have any questions for me.
Are there any questions for the chief? Mr. Hart, did you want to make, talk about this?
No, sir, but once the public hearing is completed, then you're going to want to come in and consider the adoption of the ordinance.
Okay.
And Mayor, the effective date is going to be as of today? I was.
It will need to be.
Reason through here.
It will need to be published. We'll have to publish the caption like we do any other ordinance with a penalty, and then it will become effective after it's published.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you very much, chief.
Yes, sir.
At this time, then, I'll open this for a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak to this issue? If not, public hearing closed. Item number eight, consider and act upon an alternative, you want to take.
I'm sorry, yeah, Mayor, you also have the ordinance, the curfew ordinance, and so you'd need a motion and a second and a vote on that.
Okay, then I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the curfew for minors ordinance number 21-06-03-16, with an effective date to be effective upon its publishing.
Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Okay, item number eight, consider and act upon an alternative compliance application for tree preservation for the oaks at Tower Ridge subdivision on 3+691 acres located at 3100 Tower Ridge Drive, the Oaks at Tower Ridge, AC 21-0009. Mr. Hart.
Yes, Mayor and council, I'd like to have our planning manager, Michelle Maxwell, to come and lay out this item for you.
Another tree preservation. This is something that you saw back in, originally approved the PD back in '64 of 2000, so it'll be one year ago tomorrow. It's like 3 point, just over 3.5 acres, located on the west side of Tower Ridge, north of 2181, the Dallas, Lake Dallas High School is just west, there's a church just on the east side of Tower Ridge. This is a more detailed view, you can see the, all fields to the west, it's a heavily treed site, the church is in this location, Meadowview, just north. 3.7 acres, the request is for an approval of an alternative compliance application. They were approved in February, February 22nd, for preliminary plat before P and Z, with the condition that they would come back to you all for the alternative compliance, once we looked at lot layout in more detail. Currently, they, as I mentioned, the PD was approved back in June of 20, and it was for 17 single-family lots. Currently under review for engineering drawings, the civil construction plans, and they do fall under prior past practice, one of the last subdivisions, I think, or zoning approvals that were granted that notion under prior staff where the right-of-way utility easements, building pads, and so forth received an exemption from any mitigation. This site, because it is heavily treed, and you can see the exhibit here, the areas in Fuchsia, outlined in Fuchsia, are areas that do not have tree canopy coverage, so they do receive the heavily treed lot reduction option that is outlined in our ordinance. Again, the request is for alternative compliance, they are proposing to preserve 225 protected trees within the yard areas, and just by way of reference, the key at the bottom, the shaded trees are the trees proposed for preservation. The trees that are not shaded, though are in silhouette, are being removed, though they are the trees that fall under the exemption, so they, they're not really being identified because they're not a part of the process necessarily, if that makes any sense. So in terms of removal, they're removing 347, which includes those grayed-out trees, or the outlined trees, though they're paying, they're requesting to pay a fee in lieu of, which is $21,000, $21,525 for mitigation of approximately 143 caliber inches, and we'll see that a little bit further in more detail. And they're not proposing to replant anything, rather to offer a fee in lieu of. The red trees are subject to mitigation, and the reason they're highlighted is because they fall outside of the exempted areas. In your report, staff report, it was in a little bit more detail, I'm trying to outline it here so you understand the two options. The first option is what the applicant has proposed, it's for a full-on payment of a fee in lieu of with no replanting. Staff is offering that you might consider an alternative, and that staff can be granted the authorization to work with them during the construction to encourage the replanting of trees within the common areas. They have two small common areas, it may or may not be practical, but once we get further along with grading and they start the detention behind it, which is located in the northeast corner here, and then there's a drain easement here to the south, there may be some area where they can replant to reduce that mitigation fee, and Helen Eve and I wanted to put a caveat in tonight, so it's not in your report, but we're offering it here on the screen, that if the planting can occur, that you might consider reducing the caliber, the mitigation fee from $150 down to the $70 that we've seen in the past being granted, provided that 20% of the remaining caliber inches be replanted on-site if practical, and that would equate to about 10 trees, 10 additional trees, and then they would just pay the fee in lieu of at a reduced rate if they would work with us. That's just something for your consideration. The applicant is trying and has expressed a sincere interest, in staff's opinion, to preserve a significant number of trees on private lots. There are a few trees that they're proposing to preserve within a strip along Tower Ridge that may or may not, once final grading occurs, be able to be preserved, though replanting might work there. So they are trying. It's a.
What ones are those, Michelle?
Which ones? I'm sorry. So in the shaded, the shaded portion here, you can slightly see there's a, I think, is it 15 feet, a 15-foot wide?
The natureway lot? Yes.
Yeah. I thought so, too. So it's about 15 feet, that's a buffer, and they're providing a meandering sidewalk through that location, and they're meandering to try and save some trees. They do have a caveat on their detailed plans that they, some trees may need to go away, though we didn't highlight those specifically because they fall within the exemption area, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't require mitigation based on past practice. That was a very good question. So staff is recommending approval as presented to grant the removal of protected trees with the payment and fee of lieu option for replacement mitigation, as outlined in the application on alternative compliance that's contained in your agenda packet. We're also asking, as an alternate to that or as a subcategory, that you would consider permitting staff the authorization to work with the applicant administratively during construction and prior to acceptance of public improvements to address mitigation methods that may result in a greater number of trees, as we mentioned. And then, of course, that would include a reduction in the fee, provided that at least 20% or 10 trees could be found and replanted on-site. And the applicant is here to answer any questions.
Is there any question from council?
I've got a quick question, Mayor. Can you go back one slide, please? So option one, their financial exposure max is at $21,525?
Correct.
What would be their financial exposure under option two? Would it not exceed $21,000?
It would definitely be less. Let's assume that they, what's 20% of 114 caliber inches, three times, that's about 30 inches, so that would be reduced against this number, so 113 caliber inches to mitigate at a reduced $70, so it would be half.
Could potentially be half.
At least, yes.
Okay, all right.
So if staff is going to address this, it's not going to be like staff is going to say, oh, well, I think we need this tree, or we don't need this tree, you'll work with the developer, and if they say we need to do this or that, because I know we've run into that before, so you'll be working with them, and if they say we need to remove this one, or we need to replant this one, but it's not, it's going to be like staff's going to say, oh, I think we need a tree there.
No, we want to avoid the situation of having to come back to you all to make this more of an administrative function, a field change, and make it a bit, provide a bit more flexibility. The way the ordinance is currently written, we don't have much flexibility to work other than to come into the public realm, so we were hoping that we could provide you with a catch-all to give us a bit more flexibility until the ordinance rewrite has been approved.
Any other questions for council? Okay, thank you very much. All right, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Yeah, if you can bring that slide back up. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve option two, which is that staff has the authorization to work with the applicant administratively during construction and prior to the acceptance of public improvements to address mitigation methods that result in a greater number of trees being planted.
Would it be possible to have the full-on one and two, because we, staff, did not actually have a conversation yet with the applicant, which I'm going to do after this, just to make sure that.
Oh, I got you, so we want everything.
We do, just to give us some.
Okay, then I would like to add to my motion, that we also approve option number one, which is granting the removal and fee in lieu of replacement of mitigation caliber inches as outlined in the attached application for alternative compliance worksheet, and as depicted on the tree survey preservation and removal plan.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Burke.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion from council? Cast your vote. Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, item number nine, consider and take appropriate action on resolution 21060319, a resolution of the City of Corinth, Texas, establishing a short-term motor vehicle venue project. Mr. Hart.
Yes, Mayor and council, we've had, this will be the second time that this has come up now, following the election and the adoption of the short-term rental tax, if you'll recall, we declared the venue and the elements that that would fund. This is a resolution, and then there's an accompanying ordinance on the next agenda item, and this is a two-step process to actually impose the short-term car rental tax, and we have set in here for an effective date of July 1.
Okay. Are there any questions for the city manager? If not, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 21-06-03-19.
I second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number 10, consider and act on the ordinance number 210603-18, imposing a 5% tax on the rental of motor vehicles in the city for 30 days or less for the purpose of financing the commons of Agora in accordance with the provisions of chapter 334 of the Texas Local Government Code, as amended. Mr. Hart.
Okay, Mayor and council, this is the same element, this is actually the adopting ordinance, and this is what makes it actually effective July 1.
Are there any questions for city manager? If not, I entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 21060317, with an effective date of July 1, 2021.
I second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote.
Hold on, what was it, 7, I think it's 18.
Mine says 17.
Okay, no, okay, good, sorry.
Cast your votes. Okay, it's unanimous. Council comment and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and or comments to fellow council members, the public and/or staff on any issues or future events. Also, in accordance with section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Burke.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Garber.
Yes, sir, we were going to talk about the Fourth of July parade. Mr. Hart?
Yes. We, we have, the idea would be what vehicles or cars that you want to have. You know, we typically use Bill Oder Ford. There are no convertibles available, and there are very few vehicles available, I mean, basically pickup trucks. So, it's almost, we're going to need to find our own vehicles. I was trying to believe I could let you ride my bike. But, but we're going to have to find our own...
Okay.
Vehicles.
So, we...
How many vehicles are we going to need?
Well, I, I think, you know, that's what we were talking about with the staff yesterday, is I think you have traditionally had, it was one or two per vehicle, because, you know, last year we didn't do it, and the year before we were on the boat when the Cambodians were here. So, so now we're going to go back three years, and I don't remember exactly, I don't remember whether you had one car or two.
Do we have city trucks that we could use?
Yeah, we could, we could use, we could use the public works vehicles with the logos on them and so forth.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that. And if we could have, you know, one or two of you per vehicle and...
We can all get in the back of that. I mean, there's not that many of us.
No. Yeah, I think it would only take a couple trucks. I've got to pick up. The, the other question is, of course, we have the city council parade, but we were also talking about the Lake City's Focus. I think we're going to have a vehicle in that parade, too.
Okay. Now, we have taken care of getting the booth, and all of that stuff has been taken care of for Lake City's Focus. But no, we could, we could go back and...
Okay.
That'd be easy enough to...
So, either way, I've got a pickup truck, and I can certainly fit five folks back there, and of course, I'll have three kids, because they love to throw that candy.
I'll volunteer my truck.
Okay. Yeah. So, that's enough pickups to make it work, and then we'll...
You guys fill in with city trucks.
Right, yes. And then we can pick up one for Lake City's Focus. So, I'll get with Catherine on that.
Can we have a budget, a decorating budget for that? So, I mean, really, so we look good.
You're going to have to help.
Seriously.
The long and the short of that is yes, but...
You don't have enough money to make me look good, Tina.
I guess my question is, are all the council members going to be in attendance?
Yes, I'll be there.
Yes.
I'll be at the lake.
All right. So, we'll have at least four.
And yes, I can, I'll just need to get with you on, I have no clue to what kind of...
We don't need a lot, but you don't.
Yeah, but we can get...
Stramers or something?
No, we need Luna articles.
Just tell me what you need, and I will work it.
We had a band last year, okay, guys? They made us the band.
Oh, yeah, nice, my band.
We got to do better than them.
Well, we'll just put a, we'll put a big speaker with some loud music on it.
Okay.
We're going to bring back that Cambodians.
How about school bus? Okay. Do you have anything more?
I do not, sir.
Okay. Mr. Holsworth?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes, sir. I just want to remind everyone, there is a mixer with CoServe and Keep Corinth Beautiful on June 10th, 5:30 at the Ballpark. Everyone that could be there, it'd be great. And Wednesday morning, the Bearded Barber, which is one of our Corinth businesses, had a ribbon cutting, and it was so well-attended, I was very excited for them. So, thanks to everyone that does these things.
Mrs. Pickens?
No, thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
One item is, on June 16th, is the groundbreaking for, for the dam at Lake Ralph Hall. We will want to meet at the upper, we need to be at the Upper Trinity office, on the bus, ready to pull out at 7:30 that morning. Now, and so, I mean, we can, I could get some stuff to you, we could meet here at City Hall at 7:00 that Wednesday morning and drive down there, carpool down there, but so that would put us, but we need to leave here about 7:00 to be down there to get onto the bus. The, the groundbreaking ceremony, you won't actually, won't be on shovels or anything, but there's a large map, and you'll be putting the Corinth logo and sign on, on the, of the sign. And then we'll go down to the high school in, in the Landonia and have barbecue at about 11:30 or 12:00, and then we'll head back. You're going to want to wear comfortable shoes and, because we're going to be outside the whole time, and so, comfortable clothing and comfortable shoes.
What happens if it's raining?
We're going to...
I think if it's raining, we're going to go inside the gymnasium at the high school in Landonia, and then, right now, we think there's going to be about 300 people there at the groundbreaking. One of the speakers will be Ralph Hall. One will be the chairman, or the chairwoman of the Texas Water Development Board, who's financing a lot of this through the state funding program. And then the county judge from Vannan County will be there, and our own Andy Eads will be there as, as part of those activities.
Does the mayor get to speak?
No.
Oh. I'm disappointed.
There'll be a lot of water and stuff there.
All right.
And I think I've, some of you would have gotten...
Invitation.
An email that I've registered you. So, I've registered everyone except Sam. Okay? And so, Steve, you're on, and then the...
And Bob, just as a side note, you know, that's my birthday, so Danielle will be with me.
Okay. I'll, I'll...
You're looking for a free lunch.
That won't be an issue at all.
Okay. So, if we need to take our own vehicle, not a problem, but...
If, if you're going to take your own vehicle, let me know, so I can kind of tell you where to be, and you're going to want to be there no later than 9:15.
I'll be here at City Hall at 7:00 AM and follow if that's the case.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, you mean ride the bus? Ride the bus?
Or following the bus.
Follow the bus. Yeah, they want you at, I don't know, at some location, no later than 9:15.
Okay.
So, they can get all that set up, so. But I'll go hold a Nancy on that.
That's the second time he's mentioned that that's his birthday. He wants to pay for a present or something.
Bring a present.
I don't know, but I've always wanted to go do something like this on my birthday, so I feel like I'm living the dream. Thank you.
Living the dream.
Okay.
There is nobody else you know that has got to open up a lake on their birthday. This is a big deal for me.
No, you just want it named after you. All right.
Awkward sermon. Lance Garber.
But Hart, anything else?
Oh, they definitely...
Okay. All right. I think tomorrow, isn't it, at 10:00, there's also a recognition and promotion for fire and police?
It's a pending ceremony and a promotion. We got 10 of them that we're recognizing.
Okay. All right. That's at 10:00 tomorrow.
It'll be at Firehouse Number 3.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Now, Mr. Hart, what items do we have in executive session?
Oh, we're going to have... Oh, my goodness. 71 and 72.
Okay. So, at this time, at 7:04...
And it's 551-0711 and 551-072.
Okay.
It's a little too short for me there with the...
Okay. We're going into executive session at 7:04.
Is this going to be real?
All right, this time, we're adjourned.
Catching them up at 7:17.
Okay. It's at 7:17. We're back in regular session, and we're adjourned.